You look a little cold there, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, we haven't turned the heat on in the house yet, so getting a little chilly.
I keep resisting as well, but I think I'm about to be outvoted.
Hey Dylan, it's Clint Nichols. I just want to get a mic check real quick, make sure I'm not staticky or anything.
No, sir, you sound fine.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Hughesman, I believe you're still on mute.
Thank you. This is a virtual meeting using the Zoom platform. Members of the public can view this meeting live on Channel Eight or the city's website. If you're a council member, please be sure to have your video camera on and be mindful that we are streaming this meeting on Channel Eight and on our city's website. The chat function is disabled to ensure that the public can see all portions of the meeting. The city clerk is the host of the meeting and I, or IT director will be the co-host for tonight's meeting. Council members and panelists will be able to unmute themselves when recognized. Please mute yourself when you have finished speaking to prevent disruptions. This time I will call the special meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Hughesman?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Present.
Councilmember Madera?
Present.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Present.
Councilmember Noble? Councilmember Wardiola?
Present.
Councilmember Hurst? Councilmember Grimes? Councilmember Smith?
Present.
Mr. Mary Yevakorum?
Thank you. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to excuse those members not present.
Mayor Hughesman, I showed up a little bit late. Sorry, guys.
Councilmember Madera?
We have to excuse those councilmembers not present?
Thank you. And Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
I second that.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second to approve those members not present. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for a discussion, we'll take a vocal vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes? Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you, sir. We have a limited agenda this evening. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss public safety issues. I appreciate everybody taking time out of their evening tonight to join us so we can have this conversation with the news of two separate shootings within Commerce City last week, or last weekend, as well as other issues that have taken place, such as the event at Pioneer Park, the incident on Monaco Street and other shootings and other, for lack of better words, just tragedies that have taken place without our city. I wanted to have this meeting in order to allow the police department to brief us on actions that are being taken to prevent future occurrences from happening. What we can do as a community to come together in order to make our community safer for the residents of Commerce City. So with that, I will turn it over to interim city manager Tinklerberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple introductory remarks before turning it over to Chief Nichols. One is that, you know, in regards to the shootings themselves, the police are conducting an investigation, so there's probably very little they can talk about with that. So don't want to disappoint you regarding that. But the other item as well is, you know, we've been having a number of people show up in the parks, basically unannounced, and in large crowds. And so at any time, you know, when that happens, we don't have extra officers out on patrol or on duty. And so, you know, asking, I'll just throw out the number of four officers to, you know, get 500 people flushed out of a park is a pretty daunting task for those officers. So again, you know, we have to approach it carefully and sensitively so that it doesn't turn into a more serious situation. So again, don't want to disappoint you with what we can cover tonight, but certainly look forward to the discussion. Chief Nichols?
Thank you, sir. Mayor, city council members, happy to be with you this afternoon. And as the interim city manager mentioned, this is an act of an open investigation. So I am not at liberty to discuss great details outside of what has already been released in the press release. I can sort of tell you that on the regional level, we are starting to see increased levels of violence, not only in Commerce City. As a matter of fact, I'd be, I'd be pleased to tell you that Commerce City is not experiencing the levels of violence that a lot of other communities are seeing. As it relates to the park, there are a couple of issues that we are dealing with. One of the issues that we are dealing with, again, on a regional level, is the number of participants that participate in these flash parties. And what that is, primarily what we're seeing are car clubs, and it is not strictly limited to car clubs, but our specific incident that we've dealt with has been car clubs. And what typically happens is they stage at a park at a certain time, typically in their own neighborhoods, and they wait for a message to go out announcing where the party is going to be at. And at that point, they all converge on wherever that location is. I can tell you even as early as Saturday, we had about 10 to 12 vehicles in Pioneer Park. They were waiting, we got called about it, and we responded. They were waiting for the message to go out, and as soon as it did, all of them left to the next spot. There was not anything that we can do about that. The parks are public, they literally park and stage, and when the message goes out, they left. We are fortunate that they did not choose a Commerce City park to rally in. And again, this is on a regional level, this has become a fairly significant issue, because when they do show up, we are talking vehicles to the tune of about, you know, 100 upwards of 500, depending upon the weather and the date that the party is announced. And when they do show up, they show up en masse. I can tell you the one incident we did have at Pioneer Park, our officers did respond. We had four officers working the south end of the city, and we had, at some estimates, up to about 500 to 600 people in the park. And we're talking with the DJ, food vendors, food trucks, the whole nine yards. And yes, while that should have been a permitted event, asking four officers or even taking all the officers that were working in the city that evening and trying to get the park clear is a bit of an impossibility. In addition to that, Senate Bill 217 has sort of placed some limitations on some of the things that we can do. It has definitely had an impact on who we can contact and why. And I would tell you that some of the issues that we're dealing with when we're contacting the folks that are in the park en masse, the numbers are on their side. There's not a whole lot we can do. We can certainly go out there and we have contacted the person in charge. We let them know that, listen, it's a public park, you're here doing open hours, you're welcome to hang out, have a good time. We advise them of the hours that the park closed, and quite frankly, we hope that they leave when the park closes. And we're committed to going by and announcing that the park is closed. I can tell you one of the things we did at the conclusion of the events this weekend, and kudos to the legal team, we've sent some, an ordinance their way that will allow us to deal with some of the underlying issues in the park, and I think it'll be pretty effective. I just got it as early as today. I'll allow the, the city attorney can probably brief you on the legal items of it, but we're hopeful. And we, we think that this will be a tool in our bag that will allow us to deal with some of the underlying issues. Fortunately, it will have an impact across the city. As you know, we can't just create ordinances for issues that are in the south. So one of the parking issues that we're dealing, that we've asked the city attorney to take a look at and create an ordinance for you to review, comment on, and we're hopeful that you'll take a look at it and pass it. It will impact the other parks within the city where we are not experiencing problems. So in a, to fix one problem, we kind of have to cast a wide net. I think that this is a minimal effort to do what it is we're trying to accomplish. But again, I think it is something that we have been lacking that will give us some teeth to deal with some of the issues that we're dealing with. But before I move to that issue, you know, we talk about some of the issues in the parks, and parks are open spaces, and we get quite a lot of requests for noise in parks. I can tell you that we have at least three residents that are unhappy that they live across the street from parks. Here's what I can tell you. And we've contacted the folks that are in the parks and having a good time and using the parks for the purposes that they're intended. For the most part down south, these are young Latino men and women. They aren't bothering anybody. And they will tell you that oftentimes their house does not have air conditioning. It's in the 90s, and they would much rather be outside than stuck in their neighborhoods. And we actually want them to enjoy the park. Are they sometimes loud? Yes. I don't know what the loudness meter for an actual park is, but I can tell you, in my estimation and the estimation of my staff, they're in full compliance with the law. I know there were some concerns with drag racing and doing, and listening to music that was not necessarily catered to the resident. But when my folks went out there and talked to the actual truck club that was dealing with it, quite frankly, we were quite surprised that they actually came into compliance. The president of the club did everything he could to keep the noise and the drag racing down, and we haven't had any issues. At the end of the day, we are limited in what we can do in a park during open park hours. That is a taxing feat. When parks close, we have a little bit more teeth. But I will tell you, one of the things we experienced this weekend as we went to close the parks was we ran into a family reunion that ran over by about 45 minutes to an hour. They weren't bothering anybody. They had reserved a spot. It went over. And I will tell you from the police department's standpoint, and they were people of color, and I can tell you, using, not using discretion to close parks could be problematic and could be perceived as systematic racism in the judicial system. And I will tell you that as a black man and as a police chief, I have to take a look at the way we enforce the laws to make sure we do so across the board. I do not want to police a tale of two cities, one in the south and one in the north. And so I can tell you from my standpoint, we are very critical of ourselves. When we do our staffing plans, one of the first things we ask is, who is going to be negatively impacted by this action? And can we do it equitably across the board? So the ordinance that you'll see coming your way will give us some teeth to do that. It will not be a south enforced ordinance only. And so I want to make sure that I'm very clear to council when you take a look at the ordinance and you have honest discussions about the impact that this is going to have across the board. And on that note, I can either take questions, or you may want the, the city attorney to weigh in on the ordinance that we've asked him to take a look at for us.
Before we get into questions, Mr. Sheasley, would you like to address that ordinance?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Good evening, members of council. This weekend, the chief asked to prepare an ordinance that would address parking within city park property and then parking on roads that are immediately abutting park property as a method of controlling access to the parks during curfew hours. And the chief's proposal was to essentially confirm that parking and leaving vehicles overnight in, on park property, which includes rec centers, open space, and the, and the Buffalo, or yes, Buffalo Run golf course in past the curfew hours, would subject vehicles to immediate towing. Our current towing ordinance allows that any vehicles abandoned on public property, including parking lots, are subject to immediate towing. And the point here is to clarify that, to keep people out of, out of parks as an alternative enforcement method if people are present. In addition to the curfew, which is currently set up to have different hours on the weekday and weekend. We ran the concept past the parks director, and there was a recommendation to make a standardized park curfew across the board as well, running from, and I apologize, I don't remember the hours immediately. I'll look it up here. But to make that standard for every day of the week and not to allow extended hours on weekends. The other aspect the chief wanted was to ensure that there could be designated areas where parking adjacent to parks during the curfew hours, but also be prohibited to make sure people are outside of the parks. So if that is something that council is interested in, I would be happy to send that along for review and consideration. I've currently written it as an emergency ordinance, should council wish to act on it on September 21st. But yes, the hours would be 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM across the board currently on the weekends. The hours extend until 11:00 PM. And that is the summary of that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheasley. Open it up for questions. Councilwoman Smith, you have your hand up.
Hey, Chief. Thank you for coming here tonight. So I just have a couple of questions about when you contact people. What are your reasonings for contacting people? How do you go about that? And how does the public have a say in how you are able to contact people?
Thank you for the question. We can contact people under three legal requirements. We can do so consensually, which means that, hi, how are you, and we agree to have a conversation with each other. And quite frankly, when an individual doesn't want to talk to the police and we don't have any other legal reason to talk to them, we, we are not allowed to. The second reason is under reasonable suspicion, which means we have to have a reasonable suspicion that they may have been engaged in criminal activity. And the third reason is if we have probable cause that they are in fact engaged in criminal activity. Those are the only three circumstances in which we can engage residents or citizens in our official duties. I can tell you, the Senate bill, the Senate bill that recently passed has sort of put the kibosh on consensual encounters, because the risk you run is you're having a consensual conversation with someone. That needs to be recorded on body worn camera, and it seems a little disingenuous that I'm saying hi to someone, but I'm recording that entire conversation on camera. In addition to that, they can always break off that contact and go do whatever it is they want to do and not have to talk to us. And at that point, we can't. When we deal specifically with issues in the park, most of the people in the park are, you know, we can't really tell who's actually in charge. Most of them are just there in the park. And so, yes, we could contact them under reasonable suspicion. The question becomes what happens when they decide they don't want to talk to the police? And then we have to make a decision, are we willing to use force on people that are in the park after hours? And my sole purpose and mission is to A, make sure that the law is enforced equitably, and B, keep Commerce City out of the news. And I don't want a headline to read that Commerce City engaged Latinos in the park and used force because they were in the park at 10:05. So we're very cautious about it. Quite frankly, we're working our way through that with our staff. I can tell you our consensual contacts have dropped off the map because cops are unsure as to how the new Senate bill is going to impact them. And now that they've got some skin in the game, they're using their discretion a little bit more. I'm confident that we're going to train out of that and get them to be comfortable on it. But there's going to be a period of time that they're going to need to get their feet wet and get comfortable with policing under these new terms, quite frankly. Hopefully that answers your question.
So I know a lot of residents think that people having a party at home is like a big deal and they're not allowed to do it. At what point are the police allowed to go and tell them to, you're being loud and you need to either break it up or, or like be quiet? At what point do the police have to intervene?
Again, also another excellent question, and I'm happy to answer it. I think the first thing we need to know is that the police cannot have their peace disturbed. So if I was to drive past on duty, my neighbor's house and he's having a party, I can't have my peace disturbed. And if they are in fact in their private residence, I have zero standing. So the only time we can address those issues is if we receive a call for service. And even that can sometimes get tricky. We can knock on the door and they can choose not to answer. And we have no further recourse except to get a warrant. And again, the emphasis on this is, do we want that newspaper heading to read Commerce City Gets a Warrant for a Kinsen Yara? I would argue we probably don't. And so we have to be judicious. And when we do get those calls for service, we do our due diligence. We knock on the door, we try to make contact, we advise people that, you know, we've had some complaints about the loud noise. If it is in fact excessive, and we have no way to gauge that, we don't have devices that we carry around to determine excessive noise. So at best, we have time limits in which at this time, the noise has to cease, and we can absolutely enforce that. Secondly, Commerce City requires a complainant for those. So residents calling anonymously that tell us that there's a loud music party at a residence, we can show up, we can knock on the door, but we absolutely can't do any sort of enforcement without a complainant. And I can understand why residents don't want to get involved with that. Their name is going to be on the citation, the neighbor will know who called, and that can be a sometimes tricky situation. So we are fully sensitive to that. I can tell you that the emphasis on the police department's part is, we want to make sure we engage in voluntary compliance. We know that there are strength in numbers. And for instance, I know recently we had a party house in which we were successful in getting that closed down because we engaged all the neighbors with anonymous complaints and said, there are 12 of you that are anonymous complaints. If all of you complain, this is not a problem because they're not going to engage all of you. And it sends a stronger message. But without that, we are sort of limited when it comes to private residences.
My last question, I won't talk specifically about the events that happened over the weekend. But when you question everybody around you, were you able to get any sort of good information from people about what happened and who, who was involved? Or was it just kind of everyone didn't want to snitch on anybody?
Well, I think that's a, that's a cultural issue. We always run into that, particularly at the immediacy of the event. I will tell you now that our detectives are fabulous at their jobs. They've developed some leads, and we are fairly confident that there is no threat to the public. I, I can say with some degree of certainty that in both of these events, these were combatants that agreed to engage in gunfire against each other. But when, we did have two people at the Pioneer Park shooting that were unrelated to the conflict that were injured. But the other shooting at the private residence, those were the folks that were the intended targets of the shooting.
And lastly, I don't have any more questions, but I do, I want to thank you for what your job. Like, I couldn't be a police officer, especially at a time right now where being a police officer is just incredibly difficult. So I want to thank you for your service and for all of the patrolmen. I worked over the weekend, and it was, it definitely was a rough weekend. And to have everybody there just working together so well, it just goes to say your police department is amazing. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I'll be happy to share that with my staff. So thank you.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Nichols, for your presentation as well. And I wanted to thank the mayor also for calling this special meeting. I have a few questions, though, and I'm really concerned because I think at this point, something needs to be addressed, and I'm glad we're addressing it. But Friday, Saturday, and Sunday around 9:30 PM, I did myself drive by Monaco and Pioneer Park, you know, because of my own concerns, you know, living right by the parks. At Monaco Park on the Magnolia Street side, I saw what happened to be, it, it appeared to be minors and young adults drinking in the park. A car was in front of me on Magnolia in between three speed bumps with extremely loud mufflers. And this particular car would zoom up to one speed, one speed bump, and then the muffler went through as he raced to the other speed bump. Then he made a U-turn, and then just in the amount of time I was on Magnolia, speed it down the other direction. And if I lived on Magnolia, I would be extremely pissed. You know, yes, that's noise, but at 9:30 at night, you know, yes, it is a park, but, you know, that it was extremely loud even just the amount of time I was there. Then I received a phone call Saturday night at 11:45 PM from an upset constituent regarding the speeding and noise along Magnolia Street and on Monaco, and from Monaco Park. So at this point, I do feel something needs to happen. And I wanted to ask you, Chief Nichols, is it in your budget? Is there any overtime in your budget for officers to have overtime to patrol the city parks?
Thank you for the question. For your first question, I would agree. And we've engaged Public Works about the speed bumps and sort of figuring out what we can do to sort of limit that. As far as the loud muffler goes, I can tell you, when we do in fact get them stopped, they do, and they do receive summonses for those. As to your second question related to my budget, I'm sure most of you are aware because I'm usually on these meetings when you guys are having budget discussions. That is not a finite resource. But I will tell you, if it is in the interest of public safety, I will spend the money and I will beg for your forgiveness later. So I will tell you, we do in fact have a plan to engage the parks throughout. uh, throughout the remainder of the the season. Uh, because I understand today is not a great example, but I understand it's going to get warm again this weekend. And so we do in fact have a plan that will address the park. I don't want to go into too many details because people will figure out a way around it. So we want to make sure that, uh, to your point, yes, we will spend money when it is, when it is in the interest of public safety. And I will fall on the sword after the fact, but uh, rest assured, I don't like seeing people getting shot in the city. Uh, a city this big of sixty-five thousand people getting two people shot, four people shot in a weekend. That's kind of ridiculous. Uh, and my staff understands that. We understand we need to be a little bit more aggressive. But we need to do it the right way. Uh, and so if the right way is providing additional staffing, I I will talk to the interim city manager. Uh, and again, public safety should trump. And again, I will do what I need to do to make sure we keep residents safe. And if that includes making sure we have a team, new staff, the closing of the parks, again, the closing of all the parks in Commerce City, then that's what I will commit to.
Okay, thank you. Um, another question, because I know, like I said, and I appreciate like Councilwoman Smith um, mentioned, I really appreciate the work. Um, you got the Commerce City Police Department is during this time, but I was curious also, how many officers resigned within the last six months and have we replaced those officers?
Another excellent question. Um, we have lost six officers since the Senate bill passed. Uh, and I don't want to send a horrible message. Uh, some of them were eligible to retire and the timing was right. Uh, and quite a few wanted to look for other opportunities outside of law enforcement and all our noble uh, causes. Uh, I can tell you, none of the employees were troubled. Uh, and we're going to miss quite a few of them. They were senior and when you have that sort of uh, brain drain on an organization, there is an impact. Uh, have we hired them? No, we have not. The pandemic has sort of put the kibosh on any hiring and there was no academy to send them to. So hiring them would have been the employees sitting around without a job to do. What I can tell you is for the most part, Commerce City is not experiencing what the rest of the region is. Uh, we do have a uh, job opening open. Uh, I checked today, we had over two hundred and sixty applications. Uh, so we're not seeing the the issues that other departments are when they open up for three months and they get five or six. And I got to tell you, I credit a lot of that to our recruiting team. Uh, we've got a great story to tell. This is a great city to work in. We are diverse. And when you compare us against like sized cities, we're, we're I'm going to pat myself on the back. We're doing a pretty damn good job. Uh, as it relates to our employees in our cities, our folks, despite the Senate bill, are still motivated. They are happy. We're doing everything we can to keep them engaged and they want to do the people's business. We just want to do it the right way without causing headlines. And as long as we can maintain that course, I don't think we'll have a problem recruiting uh, folks to come to Commerce City.
Thank you. And I just, well, I asked about if there was uh, funding for overtime, you know, to patrol the the parks in the city. I was curious, I guess this would be a question for Robert, um, if there was, if it was a possibility to take um, money from the COVID fund to assist the Commerce City Police Department with providing overtime to help monitor, you know, the the parks.
I would be happy to take a look at that. My initial thought is that it would not be. Uh, it would be a very tenuous connection to the public health emergency. To the general existing use of the public parks.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's all I had. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Madara?
Yeah, so kind of a couple of questions. First of all, thanks to all the first responders for what they do. You know, all the time, not just this weekend. I think this weekend just highlighted it more than uh, usual because it was an anomaly and um, at the same time, I think there's uh, things that we have to address within the city and um, so I was wondering, you know, we've been working with the University of Texas for a little while to provide analytics. Um, have we got any useful information and analytic from them that we can use to police more efficiently?
Yeah, he provides quite a lot of information for us. Currently, we are out of contract. And I want to make a note that the professor that's doing this for us is the same gentleman that came out during the DOJ um, process to help us fix our data. That process was just not long enough and we had introduced a new system. And quite frankly, um, it is not what I would have chosen, but it is what I inherited. And so there are two issues with the, the current CAD and RMS system. Um, the company Central Square is bankrupt now. Uh, and so trying to get assistance with that software, it's been farmed out to another data management company. There are some issues with that. And so what he has primarily been doing has been, I don't know how familiar you are with data, but our CAD and RMS system puts everything in a database. And unfortunately, you would think that first name went in a first name slot, last name went in a last name slot. Unfortunately, the way our system was set up, it doesn't do that. And there are literally thousands of tables of information. And so he has to go through and take a look at every single one of those tables and figure out what data is in there before we can automate any of our reporting processes. So what I can tell you is currently what we can do, if we have single requests, my staff has the ability to go in and say how many robberies have occurred in Commerce City in this time range. We can absolutely do that. Uh, we have to do that for every single entry that takes place. So we do have access to some data. We're not blind. We don't have the ability to make it publicly available without tying up copious amounts of staff time to do that. That's what we don't have. If that makes sense.
Yeah, no, that that makes perfect sense. Uh, I'm an accountant, so work with data a lot and and databases. So, um, do we need to replace this system?
If money were no issue, I would tell you if we have a city of sixty-five thousand people, we run on a system that runs through AdCom, so we are one eighth of a user. And in order for me to do anything useful with that system, I got to convince uh, five of my friends to agree with me. And that usually costs money. So while Commerce City may be willing to pay for it, Northland, Brighton, and you know, the sheriff's office may not be willing to. And so that becomes a bit of a challenge. I can tell you, we could in fact replace it. Um, that's going to be a expensive proposition to the tune of about two hundred and I'm, don't quote me on this estimate, it's probably high. It'll be to the tune of about two hundred thousand dollars. And it will probably take us anywhere, depending upon how we do it. If we decide to migrate data, it'll be between twelve to eighteen months. If we start with a clean system, which I would highly recommend, we can probably get it done in about six to eight.
And is that something that we can help with, you know, reaching out to our counterparts and some of these other AdCom served regions?
Yeah, that's actually a great point. That is something I had not previously considered, but you absolutely could talk to your counterparts about the system. I can tell you my feeling at the AdCom board is no one's really happy with our current RMS system. But it is what we have and money is at a premium right now, given the pandemic. And that appears to be the challenge. Uh, but and I want to be clear, we, we would have to keep the AdCom computer aided dispatch system. But replacing our RMS system, we do not have to go through AdCom to do that.
Is that our shared system?
That we enter all of our reports saying that we would be pulling all of our data out of. The CAD system is a whole separate beast that belongs to AdCom. We do pull some data out of it, uh, but it hasn't been scrubbed or cleaned.
So the RMS is separate, that's um, you know, the two hundred thousand dollar system to replace?
Roughly, yes, sir.
Okay. And then, um, you know, regardless of the ordinance, do we have enough people, I mean, four officers to clear a park of five hundred is ridiculous. I mean, that's just putting people in harm's way. So.
Yeah, I will tell you, we and and on the night in question, we had two sergeants working, one up north and one up, one down south. Uh, and I'm looking at the staffing, they had five down south and four up north, but one of those is in training. Uh, and as I mentioned earlier, we lost six people and I currently have five people on like duty. So that is the, that's just a fact of police work. Not everybody is always available. And so when I referenced the four people down south, one was already at the hospital on a call. And so they were unavailable. So the four south officers, and then we ended up taking officers from the north when we have shootings. So uh, in essence, it leaves very little for coverage for the city. Should we have a another incident? And in this case, we absolutely had another incident. We had another shooting. So all staff went from one incident, they immediately went to the next one.
And you know, for a city our size, not population wise, but just geographically, is that um, in line with industry standard for staffing?
No, if if you'll recall the presentation I did, and unfortunately I don't have that with me, but I'd be happy to send that out after this meeting. Uh, we took a look at our staffing algorithm, algorithm and and some of the things and for a city our size, we should have roughly seventy-six patrol officers. Now, keep in mind, that was before the Senate bill impact. Um, so I'm sure that will play a part. Uh, we're talking about seventy-six officers in patrol. I think right now we are at about forty-eight. And that's twenty-four seven coverage, seven days a week. Uh, it's adequate. When we get shootings, our resources are tapped. But I also want to be careful that again, there are some other creative things that we can do. And I've had discussions with the uh, both Roger and Troy regarding this about taking some of those critical functions that we don't have to have police doing and civilianizing some of those positions. So taking reports, uh, we're, we're taking a look at that. Um, about civilianizing some of those positions. So we don't need as many commissioned officers. And what I can tell you is given our numbers, if we could stay at forty-eight officers in patrol and augment them with some civilian personnel, uh, I think we would be in a much better position to keep the cops freed up for the things the cops need to do.
And so on any given day, you know, more specifically, probably the weekend, I imagine is probably when you get more calls for service, is that adequate staffing?
Well, it determines on what your uh, definition of adequate is. Uh, if you want to keep an officer in every district, we would need eight. And that's one officer in every district, which is a pretty significant chunk of real estate. And when they are down, so a traffic accident and somebody gets transported to the hospital and that officer has to go, that's an officer not in his district. Uh, but I also wouldn't tell you that we need two officers in every district. I will tell you, I took a look at our community development numbers in the growth plan. And I, you know, I don't know if you realize, it's something I pay attention to. Within the next two years, we're going to add about twenty thousand residents to the city. Uh, we're going to need a plan. What we have now will not be adequate.
And so what, what will it take to have something adequate for that kind of growth?
Well, again, I, and again, this is the conversation that uh, I've had with the uh, interim city manager and the D C M regarding staffing levels and keeping, because police are expensive. And this is a growing city and public safety is not the only part of the city that's growing. And I am, I sit in a room with the other directors and we argue and we fight over resources all the time. And I want to be clear that I am very purposeful, don't walk into the room with Bud Kids Could Die argument because nobody's going to trot that. Uh, but I also have to be very thoughtful that it's not reasonable to have a police department with a thirty million dollar budget in this city. It's not reasonable. And so we have to find alternative ways to police. Uh, the first step in that is the Senate bill is having an impact. Uh, but we still have to have the ability to engage our public. And when cops are running call to call to call, they are not sitting down with residents and meeting with car club presidents and meeting with Coltavando like we should be. Uh, we just don't have the time to do those things. And so as a governing body, I think it's important that we make a distinction between, you know, if you want us handling calls for service and dealing with violent crimes, we can. Uh, that is certainly something that we can be directed to do. Uh, but I will tell you, I think that there's a better way. Uh, and there will need to be some resources freed up to do it. But I'm hesitant to throw a plan on the table that I haven't fully researched. Uh, I got tasked with that uh, right at the period when the Senate bill hit. And quite frankly, my focus has been on getting the organization to the point where we could absorb that Senate bill and operate around it. And I think we're in a good place now that I can start to take a look at those other alternative methods of policing, which will include some civilianization, um, bringing on some true community engagement professionals. And quite frankly, my philosophy is we need to be developing long-term strategies, not short-term fixes that because nobody speeds when they see a cop on highway two. Problem is I can't keep a cop on highway two all the time. And so we have to have some enforcement with a bit of education. And quite frankly, we got to engage citizens and I've been a proponent of good neighborhoods don't need police. They don't. We should be having picnics. And on that instance, I would tell you, we don't need a lot of cops to do that. Uh, we are not there yet and cops are vital to our re-engaging our communities. Uh, and I, again, I want to make sure we do it right. That requires bodies and resources. But I want to be very clear, this city has a lot of capacity issues. The police department is one of many. And so I think the collaborative look at all of the things that the P that the city functions in and those ways to engage the community so that we can be one Commerce City is extremely important. And whether we do that through the, through the police department, or whether we do it through community development or public relations, I will be on board with whatever this governing body decides. I just want to play a part in reducing crime, uh, not having victims in our city and getting back to the days when we can actually attend block parties and and barbecues. Because where I came from in Vegas, believe it or not, uh, in the place that I work, we had such a good resolve with our community that that's what we spent our time doing. And that's what I would like to get back to, and I think we can.
So.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have a definite plan for you. I could throw a lot of ideas on the table. It's one of the things I'm engaging the Public Safety Advisory Board with in our meeting this month. Uh, we're going to talk about some of those things and they'll be a good barometer for that's a good idea, or that's a really horrible idea. And then on top of that, I also have to be very sensitive to some of the, the, the issues that are surrounding the country right now. Uh, there is a sense that maybe the police shouldn't be leading the charge on community engagement. And I can be okay with that, but I do know it does need to happen.
Uh, so it sounded like you were talking for a little bit about, you know, community engagement and uh, reaching out to some of these groups and um, some of these groups that we're also getting calls for. So is there other police departments that have like some sort of like community liaison or someone who is reaching out to these groups and, you know, even if it's just education and, you know, hey, you're in all your right to use the park, uh, when you have an organized event and you need a permit. This is, you know, you need to call it the city. Um, and just, uh, you know, that kind of engagement to make sure that people are you know, safe and, you know, most of the time that requires security to have a large event like that and and not only that, but to let the city know that this is going on.
Yeah, there certainly are, there are several models that I'm aware of that uh, of units that are highly engaged in community engagement. Uh, at my previous agency, uh, every substation, which is the size of Commerce City, had a community engagement liaison and they were in fact where they also did the, the intergovernmental affairs. So uh, for instance, when you have problems up north and you had resident lived up north, you would contact that community liaison and they would decide which resources went where and how we were going to tackle the problem. Currently, I have police officers doing that and commanders, highly paid professionals. And I'm not suggesting that we need to get out of that business, but there is in fact a better model for it.
Well, I, I thank you for your, your time and your candid responses to all these questions. Um, no, I think we still got a lot of things to figure out and I wouldn't expect you to have it figured out, you know, even this week. But I do look forward to seeing uh, the ordinance come forward and uh, see what we can do to to help you. And you know, I, I think you're, you've been doing things the right way. I've, I've grown up in Commerce City my whole life and, you know, I've seen a policeman shoot someone in the back and they didn't get charged for it. I've, you know, lost friends to violence, gun violence on both sides. You know, the ones that pulled the trigger and the ones that lost their lives. And the impact that it has across the whole community is vast. You know, there's families, there's friends, uh, students, so many people are impacted by this and you know, I, I appreciate that you're not just rushing right now and you know, I, I appreciate that you're not just rushing right now and trying to have a police state, but at the same time, trying to figure out something that's sensible and you know, realizing that we do have a, a problem needs to be addressed and whatever you need, you know, we're here for you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the comments.
I apologize, my internet is going in and out, so I missed the last couple of, uh, statements you made, Councilmember there. Um, I believe you're finished, so since you're back on mute, uh, next is Councilman Woyel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Chief, I just, uh, have you looked into any like, uh, park rangers or marshals? I know we talked about it a couple of years ago, um, because of the court system, how we're going to have to transport, uh, folks and, um, I, I don't know, um, I, I don't know, maybe some of my other colleagues have, uh, heard, but where did we go with that? And maybe we could utilize them during court and then as rangers or park officers with the same capability that some of our officers. So it would be different positions, but doing the same thing, or I don't know.
Yes, sir. Uh, that's a great question. We are in fact still taking a look at the marshal constable concept. Uh, that job description is currently being built. Um, we're going to be having some conversations with the interim city manager. Uh, I'm sure most of you are aware our budget is, uh, gonna take a hit next year and I don't want to lay off people to hire two people. Uh, so we're, we're, I'll be engaging the interim city manager at both D C Ms, uh, regarding the importance of that position and figuring out how we're going to pay for them. So uh, I will tell you, that's one of the things that we had talked about with council when it got approved. Uh, we took those positions off the table during the pandemic because we wanted to make sure uh, that we didn't bring on new employees only to have to fire them. Uh, but, uh, in talking with the interim city manager, that position has been done. And now we're projecting into next year's budget and we'll take a look and see if that's still something, uh, that's feasible.
Okay, thanks. And, and again, I echo a lot of what Oscar has said and, and living here since eighties. Um, you have done a tremendous job and really, actually, to be honest with you, I think, uh, um, the, 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 the vision you see, I think that's something that, um, I would definitely support in how you want to build this. Um, do we have issues? Yes, we do. Um, you know, it's unfortunate, but, uh, I appreciate what you and your staff do. Um, the other thing, it's not mainly for you, but what about when these flash parties happen? How is Parks and Recs, are they picking up after themselves? How is that? Um, and maybe it's for Roger. Um, how, is there, uh, some issues with that when we have, we have to get more Parks and Rec staff to go pick up the parties or how do they leave them? What conditions?
I, I can tell you at least from the one that we've experienced from a few weeks ago, they trashed the park. Um, and they have at every flash party that they've, uh, been to. Uh, our Parks and Rec guys are pretty good about it. That's, you know, that's the job. Um, and anytime you get a park that is going to have that many people way beyond capacity, you're going to deal with messes. And so it isn't just strictly limited to the flash parties. Anytime a park, Fourth of July, the, the parks a mess. And I think they, our folks do a pretty decent job of getting on it and making sure the park is ready to go. Uh, as a matter of fact, I give them great kudos because they don't complain about it. They just get out there and they get it done. Uh, so, you know, kudos to Parks and Recs.
Okay. Well, thank you again for your department and Parks and Recs. Thanks.
Councilwoman Noble?
Councilmember Hurst was before me.
Councilman Hurst.
Thanks for the presentation tonight, Chief. Um, I'm not going to repeat a lot of the questions that were asked. I think there was very good interaction or very good, um, discussion tonight. You know, I think it's a very important time for us to talk about how we can support the chief, uh, in his plan. And obviously it's something that's going to be a work in progress from all parties. Um, we, we're living in kind of an unpredictable time. So the spike in crime in the metro area was never anticipated, uh, uh, you know, until twenty twenty happened and everything that's gone with it. So, um, I think this is definitely a trying time. Um, tight budgets, lots of unknowns. Um, and, and quite honestly, more people looking, uh, to utilize parks than ever before. So I, I understand all those challenges. I think for us moving forward, we got to talk about how we can really work the chief's plan into our comprehensive plan and fund some of these projections, you know. I think the chief makes a really good point about the twenty thousand new residents that we are, uh, hoping to accommodate in the next couple of years. Uh, or at least in the near future. Um, and that has to be part of our, you know, public safety has to be one of our primary cornerstones of our, our comprehensive plan. How we're going to fu- fund that appropriately. Um, you know, a lot of times, uh, I, I think about what the chief is going through right now with the Senate bill. It's, it, it's not about, um, it's not just about, you know, some of the stuff we've talked about. It's, you know, we're also an employer. He's also their boss. How can we protect these people who are out there trying to protect our community? And comply with all the laws that, that, uh, they have to while doing their job appropriately. And so I think there's a lot there, um, to continue to kind of work through that we need to make sure that we set aside the appropriate funding. So we do protect uh, as part of, of public safety, we're not only protecting our citizens, but we're protecting our police officers that are out there doing the job. And so, um, I think it's a challenge. Uh, Chief, I love your approach. Uh, always impressed by, you know, the way you, your perspective on things. And so, um, I'm confident that we can work towards, you know, that type of solution where, you know, we kind of build these things. You know, you, you never want to predict crime. I'm not saying that, that, that's very predictable. Um, you know, as new development happens, but we are spreading our, our kind of square mileage even further. Kind of wrapping around the arsenal. And so it's going to be, um, even more of a challenge for our, our police force to, to manage just the square mileage, not just the, um, the increase in, in, in residence. So, uh, interested in seeing the park, uh, ordinance. I, I'll just come out and say right now, one of the things that concerns me just from the, the idea, and it's not, uh, not that I don't like the idea. But, you know, we've heard several people say, you know, there's people drinking at the park. Whether that's legal or not, it's happening. Um, last thing I want is to discourage them from leaving their car at the park and driving home drunk. And so trying to find solutions around that. Um, if somebody goes to the park, has more than two, I mean, you know, you, you shouldn't be driving home and, um, at any point. And so I just want to make sure that we take on some of those challenges, you know, the, um, the idea of being able to enforce that hits right, right on, hits it right on the head for me. But I also understand that there'll be some one offs that we'll have to work through some challenges, you know, if somebody was trying to, um, you know, be a good citizen, I guess. I don't know what you would say, but be a good citizen, not drive home after having too much to drink, um, and then we tow their car. You know, I, I want it to be, you know, make sure that we're encouraging people to be responsible as well. And so I, I think we can try to work that into, you know, the, the discussion around the ordinance, but overall, I think that's a good direction for us to take this right now.
Councilwoman Noble?
Thanks very much. And, uh, thank you, Mayor, for calling this meeting tonight. And, uh, thank you, Chief Nichols, for filling us in. And I also want to thank, um, Councilmember Alan Thomas for driving to the three parks, to the two parks, um, over the weekend on Friday, Saturday and Sunday nights. That gives an interesting perspective and I appreciate her doing that. I have a basic question to ask first, which is, what is the lighting like at these parks?
The lighting is pretty good. It's one of the things we actually discussed as a strategy is, you know, as soon as the park closes, turn the lights off. My concern is the folks that are going to leave the park when it closes are going to leave anyway. And if you turn the lights off, our visibility in the parks may make it actually unsafe for people walking through. Um, and so that was our primary concern. So we backed off of that a little bit. I don't know that we want these neighborhood dark spots. I mean, our parks are absolutely beautiful. Um, and there's no reason we should want to turn the lights off. Um, and again, I don't want, if the lights aren't on in the parks and cops are not on foot in Pioneer, it's going to make it very difficult for us to see what's actually going on in the park as we drive through. So uh, the parks are for the most part fairly well lit.
I was thinking the opposite, actually, to flood the, the park with lights when it was the end of the evening. As opposed to turning the lights off, but to turn really bright lights on.
That, that may work at Pioneer, but people live adjacent to those parks. I would imagine you'd get inundated with complaints.
Well, that, the alternative may be worse, so it's hard to tell where we are at the moment. I think it's something that would be worth taking a look at. You mentioned that this is a regional issue. Could you please, um, talk about that more?
Yeah, I can, well, if you've watched the news, I can tell you on the, specifically on the Saturday in which we experienced our two shootings. Uh, Denver had, I believe, three homicides and a variety of shootings. Adams County had at least two shootings working uh, in residents that actually are in Commerce City, but they were Adam County addresses over in that Birch neighborhood. Uh, Brighton had a murder in one of their parks that I believe the actual truck club thing actually went to Thornton this weekend. And so they had a bunch of fights at their park as well. And so we're starting to see that on just about every, uh, on every weekend, uh, where we're just starting to see some unprecedented levels of violence. It also, I don't want to use the word doesn't help, but the weather has been fairly nice for people to get outside and enjoy parks and open space. And I think something that's important to remember is, you know, the COVID nineteen pandemic dealt us a hand that we weren't sure about. There's no place for people to go. They can't go to dinner. They can't go to the movies. Uh, they can't go to their favorite spots. We're telling them the social distance. And so they're starting to use outdoor space. Uh, you know, Denver had a family of three shot up at a park. Um, and where good people go, bad people will follow. Uh, and so I just think that, yeah, the good thing is, and I hate to rely upon weather patterns. Uh, today gave us a little bit of a break and as the weather gets colder, our open space gets, uh, less used is typically what we experience. But again, uh, I wouldn't even hedge my bet on that because there still is no place for people to go. There's no place for them to gather and be together. There are no nightclubs open. Bars are at half capacity. So it is, it is an issue for all of us. And this is the first time I think many of us are starting to see this. You know, what happens when we coop people up for two, three months and, and the weather gets nice and we're, we're experiencing what they call hyperthermic law. When as it gets warmer and people get bored, bad things start to happen.
Yes, I was going to ask you about the, what you saw as the impact of COVID nineteen. So now I don't have to do that. I, I would agree, I would agree that that's probably played a role, um, in this, in what's going on. Um, I'm also wondering about, you mentioned, uh, the AdCom and that you're involved with five other cities. Are the five other cities not doing full crime reports either? Because of this issue with the software?
They are, they are pulling what, excuse me. They are pulling the information that they are. Uh, I will tell you, Commerce City is a leader in that area. Uh, I, once we've had the DOJ come out here in my previous law enforcement experience, I will tell you, there is nothing better than having the public be aware of the experiences that the police are having. Uh, they should know where the crime is in their neighborhood, the impact of crime. Uh, they should be able to look for that information themselves. And quite frankly, citizens that are in the know, uh, usually become better residents because of it. And so I am a fan of producing as much information as I can. Uh, part of our challenge is, as I mentioned earlier with the databases, we can, we're trying to script that information so that it pulls automatically. If we were to do that at the staff level, I would literally have to dedicate about a person and a half to doing nothing but data entry. And the information we're getting out of the system is not mapped correctly. And so for instance, uh, you should be seeing a report here pretty shortly about the uh, number of citations that goes through the courts. Uh, the data that I have is significantly off from that. And that's because the way our system is mapped and the way it's input, it doesn't exactly read to the T. And so we're trying to figure those things out. Um, quite frankly, I've been less concerned with what the other agencies are doing. I don't want to be a follower. I know what we need to do and that's what I've been focused on, but I will tell you, they are all having their, their data challenges.
To what you attribute the, uh, problem with the data becoming so complicated and unwieldy?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes. To what do you attribute the data becoming so complicated and unwieldy that it isn't deliverable?
Well, first of all, we are dealing with, it isn't just Commerce City putting their information in the system. So that database has information from all the different agencies being dumped into it. And so what happens is as you want to pull Commerce City information out, there are a couple of ways that that data could get messed up. Uh, first off, if the officers in the field don't input the, let's say they respond on a domestic violence, but they cleared a DUI by accident. That's a domestic violence that doesn't get counted. And so when we go in the RMS system, we will see that where there's a domestic violence report in here, but it doesn't reflect on a call. And so that, what happens when those two don't match up, that gets pulled out of the system and doesn't get counted on either end. And so until we can get that fixed correctly, um, in most places where I came from, the data is actually audited weekly. AdCom is not in a position to do that. And what that means is every time they create a call, say for existence, uh, if somebody does a car stop at Highway two and a hundred and fourth, well, there's a way that that needs to be entered into the system so that it is captured correctly. If they do Highway two north of a hundred and fourth, the system may not capture that information adequately. And so when we pull, run our script to pull that data, the data script realized that that's an error and it doesn't count it. And so I can tell you when the, when the John from Texas first pulled our data, our numbers were extremely low because we had so many unverified calls for service. He's slowly going through and fixing that. Part of the other issue is when the system gets a patch update, it rearranges all the tables again. So he's got a pretty good foundation for doing that. Um, it's going to take some time. He's not a full-time employee, so he's doing this on a contract basis. And he's not only mapping, but he's supplying us with, with monthly, um, uh, tactical data so that we can make deployment decisions by that as well. But again, as I mentioned earlier, for the one offs, if I need to know how many robberies we've had in a week, I can walk in and ask somebody to get on Tritech. They do some manipulation on the computer and they can pull that. But if, what I want to get to is we have fully automated script so that those reports are produced automatically. Minimal error. Producing a report with a ten to twelve percent margin of error is unacceptable in this day and age.
Um, I, I think you're right. And I, uh, still think that we as council members and we as a community, um, should be able to ask that question too. How many robberies were there last week, for example? You know, we know how many shootings there were because they drew a lot of attention. And I believe, you know, we have, in recent weeks, you told us about the number of homicides that had gone up. But I think that kind of information is, um, our duty and responsibility to provide to our community, just to ensure that we're doing all we can on behalf of the community and for them to respond as well as to what they want. Uh, the ideas for, um, engaging the community and finding solutions for this, I think are very critical. And that was a lot of what was behind the legislation that was passed. Um, and that legislation was passed by both Democrats and Republicans at the state legislature. So I think everyone was looking for the same thing. I would like, hopefully, that we can figure out a way, and we as council members perhaps, to set up some sort of, um, task force or coalition that can bring together the nonprofits who are on the ground in this, in Commerce City, the residents who are impacted, the police department, the school district, uh, some council members as well, so that we can address this. And perhaps even work collaboratively with communities that surround us. You know, if Denver is having issues and they uh, cut off Federal Boulevard by shrinking it to one lane. I know that, that requires fifty five officers per night to have that single lane, which is something That requires fifty-five officers per night to have that single lane, which is something. We most certainly can't afford with forty-eight. That would not work, so we can't do what they do by any stretch, nor can they keep it up. They can't afford to continue doing it that way. But it's like a toothpaste tube, you know, you squeeze at the end of the toothpaste and it's going to squirt out somewhere. And it may be squirting out into Commerce City, maybe squirting out into Montebello or Lakewood or other communities. And if we're all working together to find a solution, I think that that would be um a really great way to do it. I, forgive me, and because I haven't totally kept track of all the boards and commissions. The ones I'm on, I certainly know, but I'm not keeping track of all of them. The Public Safety Advisory Committee is made up of Commerce City residents. Is that is that correct? Councils, who are the council liaisons to that advisory board?
You know what? I don't have that off the top of my head. Dylan may have it available. I I don't want to put you on the spot, Dylan. I'm not sure off the top of my head. I know who it was when we first established it, but the council's turned over, so I'm not certain.
Yeah, that board does not have a council liaison. It was established uh to be kind of independent of the council at the time, and that's why they didn't establish liaisons.
That is correct. Thank you, Mayor Hughesman.
Do you think it would be worthwhile to uh have a council member involved at this point, given the issues?
My, my personal opinion, and I do not mean to be offensive to council. When you people are in the room, it takes on a whole different beast. Nobody talks freely. I enjoy great uh relationships with the council, and I don't want to send their message that they do my bidding. We have actual great. Conversations about very real things. My concern is if councils started showing up, and you are free to show up anytime you like. My concern is that the conversation will turn to what it is that they believe you want to hear. And having them being open and honest with me about some of the. Great things we do and some of the very boneheaded things we do is extremely valuable to me, and I don't want to lose that.
Then I do think um it would be important for us to consider. Creating a task force that would take a look at some of these issues from uh human service perspective. Youth, uh what are the opportunities? Having members of the youth commission on the task force, just a real confab of people getting together. And talking about solutions for Commerce City that um. That we're all working on this together. Residents were extremely concerned. I certainly saw the social media that everybody else did. About what was happening, and it must be very frightening to live in an area where suddenly. A whole bunch of people dissent on you with very noisy vehicles who are drinking and are rowdy. So I really appreciate and empathize with the concern of the residents. I certainly empathize with you, Chief Nichols, that. You don't have the staff to handle it, um to take care of it in a, in a way that would like sweep the park. You can't do that kind of thing. But there must be other solutions, and if we think broader. We look at the, what happened over the weekend, but at the same time, look more broadly. At Commerce City and what we can be doing for our community to help our community and what the community. May have been asking for for years, may have been asking for for many months, and. We may not have been hearing them when they were calling for these things, and maybe. Now is the time that we need to say, you know what? We didn't hear you before, we hear you now. Let's see what we can do to make this better for all.
Thank you, ma'am, and if I, if I could, um I, I want to provide you with, with, with two comments. The first one is, we didn't see the level of issues that took place in other parts of the city. Simply because I believe that we do a very good job of discussing with our residents about what our policing strategies are. And I will tell you, my personal philosophy is, we take a very data-driven approach to enforcement. And what I mean by that is, you know, before we start putting cops in neighborhoods, addressing the phantom. Blackmail in a hoodie problems, we want to make sure that that is an absolute problem first. And so that we can defend any and all enforcement actions we take. Secondly, uh I believe part of your commentary went towards uh the systematic racism that is in law enforcement. And I will be the first one to tell you that it absolutely does exist. Today is my fifth year in Commerce City to the day, uh and I have been stopped by the cops three times in Commerce City. The first time because I went for a jog with a hoodie on a hundred and fourth. Uh I had been in the city for two days, and two patrol cars from different directions pulled me out just about at gunpoint. And told me to stop what I was doing because some resident called and said there was a black man running down the street in a hoodie. I hope most of you know me well enough that I don't like to think that I'm running around looking like I'm a danger to somebody. But I am a large black man and someone felt threatened by that. The second time I had stopped, I was at Reunion Park, sitting in my car. As a matter of fact, I believe I was taking a. Text message from uh uh Councilman Guardiola. And a call, I was sitting there for about five, ten minutes trying to get some information for him, and I didn't want to drive and text, so I pulled over. And about five minutes later, I hear a call come out about a black man in a white Tahoe. Sitting at Reunion Park, looked like he was playing with a gun. Like an idiot, I start looking for the car before I realized that that was me. So I gotta tell you, it happens. My job is to make sure it doesn't happen, and then nobody else has to go through that experience. Now, I can tell you, I can spend the bulk of my life pointing out everything that never went well for me or didn't work out. And I could attribute it to some kind of racism. My mother didn't raise that kind of man. Sometimes things don't work out because they don't work out. But I would be foolish to tell you that getting the cops called, I know what that feels like firsthand. I know what it feels like to look at my staff and go, it, tell me again why you stopped me? And they can't come up with a reason because that's just the way we do business in Commerce City. We don't do business like that anymore. I take those complaints seriously. And so when I tell you when we take a few extra minutes to ask the right questions before we show up and start pulling guns on people. It's so that no one of color has to experience that. Uh so I hear you loud and clear. I am willing to have this conversation with any residents that willing to have this conversation. Uh are there some things we can do differently? Absolutely. We're taking steps to do that. I am a proponent of making sure that justice is equitable, and it is done fairly with regard to race, creed. Sex, color, or whatever it is you into or not into. Uh and that is the standard that I am holding Commerce City police officers to. So I, I just want council to feel at ease with, we are doing everything we can to make sure that. People are treated fairly and with dignity. But I also want to tell you, on occasion, people get hurt. There are some things that are so serious that in fact, uh and we had two examples of that this year. In which our officers were forced to drive their firearms and fire at someone. That is a reality of police work. We try to minimize it best we can. But when we do so, I want to make sure that uh we do so with the least amount of force that we can. I can't promise that's always going to be the case. We are dealing with human beings. And human beings do weird things on occasion. But I can tell you as someone who has been in that position, I'm sensitive to it. I know it occurs, and my job is to make sure that it doesn't occur on my watch. And I'm fairly confident that the rest of my staff is is equally on board with that. So you can rest assured that that we're doing everything we can to be equitable, and we're treating people with dignity and with respect. And we are still going to do the people's business.
Thank you, Chief Nichols, and I appreciate your frankness. I would like to say that I didn't make any remarks about racism. So I'm not sure where that's coming from. All I was suggesting is that we start some sort of task force. That involves all members of the community who can come together and find out if there are solutions for the young people of our community so that they have. Other avenues. Are we doing all that we can to the youth commission with um the nonprofits? With the school district, with um of course, the police department as well. Whoever we can all bring to the table. To look at what the community might need that we might have been overlooking or that they might have been asking for. And that we weren't responsive to. I'd like to thank uh Mayor Pro Tem Frank who suggested. The uh Diversity and Inclusion Commission, and I seconded her um motion on that. I hope that we can start that and maybe then ad- addressing directly uh what your comments about. The other issues that you're describing can be also addressed there as well because we have a very diverse community and that's very important. But in no way was I uh pointing at the police department in any fashion. When it came to behavior, I was merely suggesting that this is an opportunity for us to all come together and. Look at the community and how we can bridge some of these divides and make it um. The quality community for a lifetime that our logo, our motto embodies. So thank you very much, Chief.
Yes, ma'am, and and I apologize. I was not attributing uh your comments to systematic racism. You made mention of bringing the community together. I don't know that it's possible to do that without discussing it was my point, so. I apologize if my comments were inappropriately directed towards yours.
I think that we are just demonstrating right here how difficult these conversations are. And that's why they're important to have. So Chief Nichols, I appreciate you and I appreciate what you're doing, and I also appreciate. The concerns of the community and how can we all work together, and that's ultimately what we're aiming for is to make Commerce City the best community it can be. To lift all of the boats in Commerce City. That's what I'm looking for, and I know you are as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to add a few um statements. Chief Nichols, like when you're implementing a plan, and I know you're gonna include all of this, but it's really, like I said, terrifying. Being a daughter of a retired Denver sheriff, I know bullets did not have a name on them. And when you're in that area and you hear gunshots going, it's really terrifying. Um people start calling, so. Can there possibly be like a plan, um like a possible shelter or something in place as well? Or some kind of notification or text? People, you know, were even asking me, should we go outside? Is it, you know, or do we get down in our house? You know, so that was a. Very terrifying um situation, and and then on another note, um from what I saw. When I drove by the parks this weekend, to me, it seemed like the opposite that the lights. Increased more crowds, so. In the ordinance, um it seems like can the lights be turned off earlier? And then if possible, in our ordinance, can we change the time earlier to possibly ten o'clock? Until the situation gets under control. And then also possibly, um and I don't know if Robert, if you could add this um. Especially on Magnolia parking adjacent from the park, once the park is closed, because that's where. A lot of the, like I said, the action that I saw was going on. And I do have to commend Chief Nichols, um because like I said, since you've been on the chief of police, I have seen. Big improvements. Yes, racism did exist, and it strongly exists in a lot of parts of Commerce City. My father, who was a previous councilman who served eight years. Was simply stopped by previous Commerce City cops as well, simply for walking as a, as a ma- black male as well. And I also, me and my husband previously before Chief Nichols stepped in. Was campaigning for my spouse previously, and I was surrounded by six cops. And my husband was forced as well to put his hands on his, on the car. And a female officer made me leave from him. And told me they got a call that he was abusing me and we were simply walking door to door campaigning, so. I'm glad things are changing. Yes, racism does exist in this city and things are improving, but. Like I said, the scary thing is bullets have no names, so I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and again, thank you for your comments. Uh to your second question with regards to the lighting in the parks, that doesn't, my understanding is that does not need to be in ordinance. That can be a park rule that quite simply the parks director can make a decision. With regards to lighting. I don't know that that needs to be in the ordinance, uh and I'm sure if I need to be corrected, Robert will do so. To as, to your first question, one of the things we considered with regards to uh shooting incidents about the uh reverse nine-one-one and. Notify an immediate residence, that is absolutely something we could do if we didn't have the situation contained. Part of my concern is, we start reverse nine-one-one and at one o'clock in the morning, we may actually induce more panic. Than preventing it, and so I've been really apprehensive about doing that, particularly when we know that there is no further threat to the community. It is something, I had a conversation with the uh with our public relations uh director today. We are working on some things I think we'll do to enhance that. That's something I will certainly take into consideration. What I can tell you right now is if there was a definite threat to the community, we absolutely would do that. When it is contained at one o'clock in the morning. We may actually be setting ourselves up for failure by notifying people in a five-block area that this exists. We may end up with more lucky lose and potentially. People in harm's way than trying to prevent it, uh so hopefully that answers your questions, ma'am. And if I misspoke on the ordinance, I'm sure Robert will chime in and correct me.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Smith?
Hey, Chief, so we've talked about like things that the PD is doing to help maintain the violence or minimize the violence, but is it? Or do we know that all of this violence is coming from people who live in Commerce City, or is it people coming into Commerce City? Because, you know, Federals closed down, are these truck, truck cars, are they Commerce City residents, or is it from somewhere else?
Well, Commerce City does in fact have two established uh car clubs in it. And again, my folks have met with the presidents of both of those clubs. They appear to be pretty good guys. When we asked them to cut down on the racing, they literally told their members to stop, and they did. And when we told them the park was closed on Monaco and that they had to vacate, they did. So they were in fact about as compliant as you could ask. I can tell you when you get the massive showups, uh Commerce City residents are in fact there. And I think what happens is you get people that are not even in the car club that are on this uh flash party list. I can tell you that at the regional level through Adams County, uh every agency has a member that's participating in the. Information sharing for these groups, and I'm not at liberty to discuss exactly what it is that we're doing, but. We are taking some proactive efforts to identify the folks that show up and that are causing the violence. The incident from this weekend, particularly at the house party, that was in fact Commerce City residents. And the incident that occurred at the park were not.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um Chief, I want to start by thanking you personally for being here. I know I called this at the last minute, and everybody had to jump through hoops coming off of holiday weekend. But I greatly appreciate it. I think it's important not only for uh members of this council to be able to ask questions and get answers directly from you, but also for the community to hear those answers. And get uh, you know, the information firsthand. Obviously, we all know that a lie travels around the world before the truth has a chance to license boost up, boots up. And uh there's a lot of just misinformation that just flows out there in the community, so I appreciate you taking the time this evening to join us here and answer these questions. I have um several questions um that I I've written down that I'd like to go through. The first one, uh in regards to staffing, were there more officers on duty this last Saturday than you had the week prior?
I don't have the staffing chart for last Saturday, so I'm, I can tell you what I had on this Saturday. Two sergeants, five downs, four, five officers down south and four up north, which is pretty consistent.
Okay, was just curious if due to the fact that it was a holiday weekend, if we didn't authorize some additional overtime, plus up the staffing a little bit. In anticipation of problems that may occur.
And we did not.
Okay, okay. I had a, one resident made a comment that uh, you know, we have these parties that take place in the community, and and I know the last shooting we had before this last one, I'd made a comment that, you know. Residents were saying that, hey, there was a loud party going on that led to the shooting, and uh nothing was done prior hand. But the resident's comment is, you know, when they call in, there's a party and noise. It's such a low priority call. That by the time the officers have a chance to respond out there, maybe we've had an act of violence that take place. So how do we look at, you know, different times of night and parties taking place and their propensity for these shootings to take place? Given the fact that we had the shooting in Foxton Village earlier in the year that was attributed to a party. We had a, you know, shooting earlier in the year that was uh um just back in August, it was attributed to uh loud music and a party. Now we've had a third one, so it seems to be a trend that whenever we're having these kind of parties taking place into the wee hours of the morning. When they really shouldn't be, the people ought to be wrapping it up. when they really shouldn't be, the people ought to be wrapping it up so their neighbors can get a restful night's sleep. That's whenever the violence starts taking place. So how do we look at prioritizing these calls based on the time of day to make sure that we can stop them and be more about crime prevention instead of crime response?
Thank you, ma'am, that's a, that's a good question. I've answered a portion of that earlier with our sort of discretionary use of authority when it comes to parties that are in private residences. And I can tell you during this Labor Day, the commander that was on duty at the time of the shooting, commented that there was a house party on just about every block down south. And so we get inundated with loud music calls. And yes, they are in fact a low priority, they are even a lower priority when the complainant does not wish to actually sign the complaint and/or it is anonymous. And then on top of that, we also have an opportunity to do, and again, imagine this. During any Friday, Saturday night and not particularly just a holiday, Commerce City is a pretty busy place for five officers to police. You get one accident, somebody goes to the hospital, now you're down to four. You get one at lunch, now you're down to three. And you get six, seven loud music calls, those take time to go out, knock on doors. And so there is no correct algorithm for it. We could certainly increase staffing to deal with that. I would argue that's probably not the best use of our money. And I would be hesitant to say that every loud party turns into a shooting. We've had some bad experiences, yes. But generally speaking, that does not occur. We respond to quite a few loud music calls that we knock on the door and the residents absolutely say they're sorry. I think quite frankly, what we're missing is a lack of community respect. That somebody has a loud party and you are disturbing five other neighbors without regard. I think that is the bigger issue that probably, quite frankly, the police department could do a better job of addressing that. And we're gonna take some steps to do that so that we, because this is only going to get worse. As the weather gets warmer, these parties are going to move indoors. People are going to call us, we'll knock on the door. They'll agree to turn the music down, which is typically what happens. And then an hour later, we are back because the music didn't get turned down. Those are in fact ordinance violations and we can in fact write summonings for those. And on occasion, we have. But we have to be very careful with our use of discretion about going in and, I mean, we can't turn off power, we can't take their equipment. And we certainly can't take people to jail during the pandemic. So what we can actually do is extremely limited.
Thank you. I want to turn attention to the parks and, you know, we just celebrated opening up that in Small Morel Park, huge event. I mean, instantly it was met with, you know, homeless people sleeping out there next to the park, drug paraphernalia found and everything. How do we stop the use of illegal drugs in the parks and make them safe so that residents can take their kids there? Now, I understand and the homeless issue is a risky proposition. You know, homeless have just as much of a right to use the park as a resident does. However, it's the type of use that is taking place in the park that has residents concerned over the safety of our parks and making them feel like they can't take their kids there. So how do we address the use of parks to make it safer for these children?
Well, I can tell you there are, there are a few issues. We absolutely do, when we can ascertain that there are drugs and alcohol usage in the park and it is being used inappropriately, we absolutely will issue summons for that. I am also sure that you are aware that when the courts deem someone indigent and unable to pay the fine amount, it gets dropped. And so we end up with this revolving door of issue ticket. They go to court, they can't afford to pay because they're transient. And the fine gets reduced to nothing and it becomes a game that we play. And I can tell you many of those folks, they know the game. I can tell you, I don't anticipate this problem getting any better anytime soon. We've had meetings with not only at the Adams County regional level, but at, we also coordinate with Denver quite often. And if their plans to do what it is that they're going to do down on our border, the only resources within a two mile area of that location is in Commerce City. We're going to get inundated. I wish I had a solution that I could tell you, if we did this one or two things, we would absolutely solve that problem. Unfortunately, I do not have that answer for you.
What do you say to the residents that feel that your department nitpicks on small parking infractions while violence is taking place within the city? Recently, one individual was complaining their tire was on the sidewalk by about an inch and got a ticket. Yet on the same evening, we have people out there getting shot. So how do you counter that perception that we're out driving around writing parking tickets for people parking in front of their driveways? We're writing parking tickets for people who may have put a tire barely on the curb. And yet major crime is taking place in the city that we're not protecting residents from?
I would tell you, have patience. Our patrol staff, three quarters of them have less than two and a half years on. They can only write the violations that they see. And they do not have the experience to be able to distinguish between, this is one that absolutely needs to be done. And this is what I'm just going to do because I need to get a stat number. We absolutely don't push parking tickets. But there are some violations that I will absolutely tell you that if you engage in these behavior, you're probably going to get a ticket. If you park in front of somebody's driveway, probably gonna get a ticket, even if it's your own. If you park too close to a stop sign, you're probably going to get a ticket. If you park in front of a fire hydrant, you probably are going to get a ticket. I can't comment specifically on that particular incident. I will tell you that police work is multifaceted. We have a responsibility to do parking enforcement just as much as we have to do traffic enforcement, just as much as we have to investigate shootings. So yes, on a scale of one to 10, parking probably may not be that big of a deal. But if you were to take a look at the CRM system and the number of complaints that I get, they are overwhelmingly related to parking and traffic. And so I would tell the citizens that we are doing our due diligence. I apologize that some young officer got you for a tire that was an inch over the curve. And I would say our fines in Commerce City are not that high. It's a great learning lesson. They are not the only ones that have gotten parking tickets. I know several council people that have gotten some as well. So we are an equal opportunity traffic writing organization. Some days it happens.
Thank you. Let's talk about the flow of information. I know we've talked in the past on numerous occasions about your department having social media. I saw this weekend that you tweeted out about the accident that took place on two seventy, the single vehicle fatality. Yet here we had two shootings that took place and there was complete radio silence across the community of what's going on. For the council, we received an email about eight in the morning, almost eight hours after the second shooting had taken place. Nothing after the first shooting. And then it was still another about six hours before a press release was issued so the residents could actually get the facts of what had taken place. So how do we combat this lack of information that is flowing, the timeliness of information? And make it so the residents are aware of the actions that are taking place in the activities? I know you mentioned earlier about not wanting to do reverse nine one one, start the lucky lose and all this other stuff. But by the same token, having social media fire with people who don't know exactly what has gone on, but making assumptions about what is going on probably isn't helping the situation either and probably isn't helping your investigation as well. So what can we do in order to better facilitate the flow of information, especially on critical incidents like this?
Well, I would, I would tell you that while the information is slow, it is accurate. I can tell you my first set of information that I got was very bad. It was not even remotely accurate. And that's the risk that we run with putting out information too fast. I certainly don't want to ruin credibility, trust in the community with bad information where we're changing it five times. And quite frankly, this was a very fast moving event. It took us that time to figure out what actually had occurred. I would also tell you that not everybody that got shot stayed at the scene. We didn't get advised that people were showing up at the hospital that were potentially in our scene. And so by the time we got the information from all the sources on what actually happened, it was six hours later. I will tell you, I did not send out that tweet because quite frankly, that was not a priority of mine. We were dealing with a, an exhausted workforce. And then we had to make sure we were ready for day shift and their planning. So, you know, again, the only person that sends those out is me on my personal account. And that just was not a priority for the shootings at that time and place. I did not have the bandwidth to worry about a tweet. I was worried about getting resources for the folks that were investigating serious crime. Again, I did have a conversation with Jody Hardy today. I do think we're gonna do, we're gonna try to do some things a little bit differently. Yes, could that information have been sent out as we've got a shooting in the area? Yes, we absolutely could have done that. But again, that takes a resource to do it. And when I've got everybody on the scene, literally dedicated to the thirty, forty witnesses that were there, the bandwidth to do that sometimes gets challenging.
Absolutely.
But I will agree, we can do a better job.
Thank you. What is the process for community members to establish neighborhood watch programs in partnership with the police department?
They can literally give their, either their north command or south commander a call and we would be happy to assist in facilitating that. It's one of the things I'm taking a look at, getting the Public Safety Advisory Board involved in. That's one of the things we were working at because they wanted to get involved with that process. And so moving that out of the PD into a group of residents in the city that are here to assist us, I think will be extremely beneficial.
Excellent. And is that something probably enough for you to answer? But Mr. Tinklinburg, can we get some social media posts out there that give directions on how community members that wish to do that? Can contact those individuals in the police department to get their process started?
I, I can take care of that tomorrow, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll work on it.
Question regarding curfew, what is the curfew for minors in the Commerce City and how is that enforced?
I'm not entirely sure. I haven't written a curfew ticket in a long time. I'm not exactly sure.
Okay, maybe that's something that we could look at the effect of that, especially whenever they're arriving. And it looks like Mr. Sheasley would like to speak.
I, I have a feeling somebody knows better than I do on this. I'm not aware of a curfew for minors in the city. I've looked at it in the past. And don't believe we have one, but I will wait for someone to text me in the next few moments to correct me and I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you. Question regarding your comments about all the additional houses being built and, you know, our population could swell by twenty thousand residents in the next two years with all these houses being built. I'm curious if anyone has crunched the numbers to see how much it costs to service a number of houses with police services? Such as if, you know, you build ten houses, does it cost $10,000 to service them with the police department? Has anybody crunched those numbers and do we have that data?
We have not, we do our, our algorithm is based on a, using a three point one index for every residence built in Commerce City. How many calls for service a residence will generate in a given year? That's the algorithm we use.
Okay.
And that's not to suggest that's the correct algorithm. It's just the one that ICP uses and perf uses, and so we've adopted it as ours.
Okay, do you further take that algorithm to determine what Manning would be required in order to do that?
My approach is to take a, I like to give council a variety of options. That is one algorithm we could use. There are several that we absolutely could use. You know, the core city, despite it being smaller residentially generates more, they have more people living in a single family residence than the residences do up, up north. So I prefer to take a look at a bunch of different strategies and come up with one that works for this city. They're not all one size fits all solutions.
Sure, and I can appreciate that. Where I'm kind of driving with this, you know, we know that with every house that we build in Commerce City, we lose money. Trash alone is not enough, or the property taxes is, does not cover trash service alone. Then you start adding in additional services like police service. So my question comes, if we have looked at the ability to determine how much a house costs as far as providing police service, then can we figure out what kind of fee may need to be associated with the construction of such a house in order to further promote public safety from the police department?
I think that is absolutely something that we could come up with and take a look at. I'd be happy to get with Director Rogers and figure out what that looks like. Take a look at our own internal data regarding calls for service relative to crime in a specific area and provide you with some geographic numbers. That's an interesting prospect. Let me take a look at that. That's, that's pretty interesting. I would love to take a look at that. Let me engage my staff in that. I also got your number with regard to the curfew. Sunday through Thursday, it's eleven o'clock and Saturday and Sunday, it's midnight.
Thank you. Yeah, so sticking with that, that I was just bringing up, you know.
Mayor, may I also ask just to, just to clarify on that point? Did the chief say that the curfew is, there's, there's a youth curfew they identified? We, we may have our wires crossed because I found a juvenile loitering prohibition in our code, which prohibits playing or wandering or strolling, but not driving or bike riding or anything between eleven and five. So we'll clarify on that, so. And I found that by myself without needing anybody to text me. Thank you.
I, I just want to go back and hit this comment that I was talking about as far as the cost of providing service. You know, the explosion of houses in the northern part of the city have obviously strained the police department by having to cover two different geographical areas. And I think it's unfortunate the residents in the south are basically having to lose some of their police coverage because they're being diverted up north in order to handle issues up north. So if it's a budget issue, and then I think we need to look at a source of funding that is going to compensate for that to make sure that the houses up north are paying for the additional police services required. So I would like to see some information, if you can delve into that with Mr. Rogers and figure out is there an algorithm that can be determined to come up with what that cost would be? Lastly, what's the status of the e-ticket system? Council approved that in previous budget years, was supposed to be installed. Are, are we fully operational with that? I'm seeing people are sending me screenshots of their parking tickets that they got for parking in front of their driveway and they look to be handwritten. So I'm curious why we're not seeing the efficiency that council approved. I know we, Mayor Pro Tim Frank championed on getting that approved so that you guys can have that efficiency and that accuracy. But I'm still seeing handwritten tickets.
Yes, it is, it is moving forward. The COVID nineteen pandemic put a kibosh on a lot of things that were taking place. I had a meeting with the IT director and my staff three weeks ago. If that should be, I believe we're moving towards piloting here pretty soon to make sure that everything is actually working. And my understanding is that will be deployed here fairly soon, within the next few months.
Okay.
And we are absolutely looking forward to that because it will make us faster and much more accurate. So again, thank you to council for approving, actually, we didn't even make the request. Mayor Pro Tim Frank brought it up. So absolutely that, that will improve the level of service that we provide.
Okay, thank you. You know, and as I stated earlier, and whenever we started this meeting, you know, whenever I'm thinking of public safety, I'm not just thinking about, you know, the recent incidents that took place as far as the shootings, as far as the, the parks and stuff like that. But also just, you know, speeding in our residential neighborhoods, speeding around, you know, our parks and things like that. And, and it seems like constantly we're getting the residents who are reaching out and saying, hey, please, you know, put speed bumps on my street, do something. And I've constantly said that, you know, slapping a radar trailer out there just doesn't work. You know, most people, when they see the radar trailer, they're gonna slow down to the speed limit and we're not getting accurate data. There's a few out there that are gonna be trying to get a high score as if it's a video game. But for most people, they see that and it's a reminder to them, hey, I need to slow down. So my, my ask is that we develop a way to do speed monitoring and speed study tests that don't involve having to put that radar trailer out there, be it putting people out there in construction clothes and letting them run a radar gun or something along those lines. But let's come up with a solution that allows us to get more accurate data to better determine whether or not we need to do traffic calming. You know, one of my issues I have with the traffic calming program is we look for a certain percentage to be over the enforceable limit to determine that. Unfortunately, you know, traffic calming also needs to be about prevention. And we shouldn't have to have a fatality or, or, you know, morbid injury to a child in order to say, oh, we should have done traffic calming here. You know, and, and I really believe that the level of speeding that we are seeing throughout our neighborhoods is just as critical of a public safety issue as preventing the next shooting from taking place. Last thing I want to hear about is another child who is critically injured or, or, you know, in the morgue because of a, a traffic accident. That's not where we want to be. So I'm, I'm making another plea that please, let's talk about an alternative way for doing traffic studies. Let's talk about the methodology that we determine whether or not traffic calming needs to take place. And let's actually get motorists to slow down within our residential neighborhoods. Because we don't need that. You know, I see all the time, we're out there on one hundred and fourth avenue, we're out there on highway two, we're out there on Tower Road. And I get it, those roads, people are speeding seventy-five, eighty miles an hour on roads with forty-five and fifty-five mile an hour speed limits. But the risk of injury to somebody probably is far less than somebody speeding around the corner and going through a residential neighborhood and risk running over a child.
To address one of your concerns, I, I assume by the radar trailer, you mean the big visible one that records your speed as you're coming towards it? We do have a limited supply of devices that do that covertly. And when we do speed assessments, those are the ones we put up. So they're not impacted by drivers seeing the actual radar. And that's how we get our best data. We put the data trailers up again, so everybody knows it's there and they slow down. And you are absolutely right in your assessment. Some people slow down because they see it, others try to get the high score. They are not that effective, but the devices that, that get the speed assessments covertly are actually very adequate. They are not that effective, but the devices that that get the speed assessments covertly are actually very adequate. And again, as I alluded to earlier, we try to be dat- very data driven. What I've found out is when residents call to complain about a ticket that they get and I can produce the speed assessment that says, we did a speed assessment here last week and the speeds were in ten miles per hour over the speed limit on average. They generally stop complaining. If I can't do that, they usually end up calling you.
Okay, you know, again, I I want to say thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you, everybody, for taking time out of your Tuesday evening and and sitting down. I really do think this is beneficial. And I think that their questions that the residents need us to hear. Want to thank everybody on your police department, everybody from your command, your deputy commanders and your commanders, all the way down to the the trainee who's going through the academy right now. You guys do a thankless job. When you're doing it good, you get up to people upset with you. When you're not doing it good, you get people upset with you, and that's just the reality of it. Yet you guys still continue to put the boots on every day and come to work and make our community safer. So I greatly appreciate all that effort to do that. Really do appreciate, we'll echo the comments that several of council members made as far as your own personal philosophy of trying to do policing right. And I know that community policing in the twenty first century was a big thing that you've pushed, and I know that you continue to try to get your officers out there and make them members of the community. And I greatly appreciate the tact and the the way that you go about being the police chief for Commerce City. And I think that making you the police chief was one of the best things that's happened in our community in recent years, so just want to say thank you for all the hard work you're doing. Again, I thank everybody for your time. I really did believe that people needed to hear these questions and we really needed to address public safety in light of what happened this weekend. It wasn't anomalous and hopefully we don't have a repeat of that going forward. And I appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing to not only correct it, but also prevent it from taking place in the future. Is there anybody on council that wishes to address the ordinance that was proposed? Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yes, I make a motion to address the ordinance as proposed. But like I would, I'm not sure how to motion it, but Robert, can I add that the time shaker? I'm not sure if that needs to be in the ordinance to ten o'clock, that the parks close until you know, this problem is addressed and can it possibly also add on the Street of Magnolia? Once that park closes, there's no parking along there?
You you can. I'd have to figure out where to to work that in tonight. The just to address the the latter part of the question, that once those park the park hours are met and the park is closed during those hours, the parking on streets adjacent immediately adjacent to, not if there's a house on the other side of it, you can park in front of there. The idea is that the parking would be prohibited in the part of the street right next to the park. So would that cover your comment about Magnolia Street?
Yes, and another concern, I don't know if this would be included in the ordinance, but at Pioneer Park could possibly city staff look into possibly, once the park is closed at night, putting up chains on both sides of the entrance so they can't speed through the parking lot and still enter the park. That's another major concern that Pioneer Park, we can enter on both sides, on Holly Street and on Monaco.
Sure, I think I think as far as the ordinance goes, I would recommend not having something so specific in that and and leave that up up to staff to do. I don't know what other needs they have in there. And so if that parking by the particular park would be covered by what's written in the ordinance, I've made some some typographical changes to the ordinance. So I just wanted to talk process with the council. Right now, if you wanted to consider this tonight, we'd have to either read this in full or post it on the screen in a screen share so that people viewing can see it as this was not made available before. And allow people to the time to read it on each item. But if that is the the choice, I would like to the motion with your with your timing would be to move to introduce and approve as an emergency ordinance the proposed ordinance received tonight, something like that, if that if that would be your your motion. And then we can take steps from there. And Dylan can assign it an ordinance number and we can get through reading the entirety of the ordinance.
Yes, um, yes, so I would, I would like to make the motion, then as you stated, um, just because like I said, I had a terrifying weekend along with the residents in my area. Thank you.
We have a motion to introduce and approve on an emergency basis, the ordinance that was proposed, it would establish park hours. The current ordinance says from parks will be closed from eleven P M to five A M. But a request has been made with an amendment to attending the five P M. Is there a second for that motion? Councilwoman Noble?
I'll second that that motion. I start singing, do you know, second that emotion? Anybody else know that song?
Thank you for that. So we now have a motion and a second to introduce and approve on emergency basis, the ordinance that was proposed. That is with an amendment to make it from ten P M to five A M. Mr. Sheasley, I will let you and Mr. Gibson take what needs to take place after that. Councilmember there?
Yeah, I I would like to see this continue to the next meeting, you know, it's just in reading through it, there's a lot of unintended consequences, you know, that the chief kind of alluded to. One of them is parking alongside parks. And as we know, there's a lot of parks in the city that have parking alongside a side of the road on on parks and you know, one of my concerns is going to be these cars are going to end up in the communities and we're going to take a lot of heat for it and you know, what are the consequences going to be? Are all those cars going to be towed? And, you know, I just would like a little more time to to go through it and ask some of these questions of staff. So, you know, I would prefer to continue it to the next meeting and review it a little bit more in depth and try to try to get some answers to these types of questions.
All right. Councilwoman Noble?
Yes, thank you, and and I had a question also, if the curfew is ten o'clock, what's it mean for special event nights? Would you get a permit in order to go longer, for example? You know, Fourth of July or something that's held at a park that normally doesn't kick off until nine, you're certainly not going to have the the parks cleared by ten P M. So I had questions. I wanted to second it in order to have discussion.
Thank you for asking that question. I I think I can answer, but I do want to speak on behalf of the the Parks, Rec and Golf Director, who's not here tonight. There is an exception for employees in doing official business and then when there's a specific authorization from the city to remain in a park, perhaps pursuant to a permit or to a park rental. But the director wanted me to note that it it becomes difficult to explain to people who are in the park without a license, why other people are still using the park, so there will be some enforcement issues there. And there are questions about use of the park, especially during hours where the sun is out much later. And you would be restricting at ten o'clock the hours when and displacing youth to use the skate court and the basketball courts as well. And then I think those are the the primary parts. The the Parks Department was recommending keeping the ordinance at the curfew consistently at eleven P M. And so that would be, I think, the, look at my notes here. Yep, and so I think that's the the gist of of those answers. So people could continue to use it if they're licensed, but there are enforcement issues and then displacement of others.
I'd be willing to accept an amendment if anyone wanted to make one, or I can make an amendment. Councilmember Ellen Thomas, would you be willing to change the hour of curfew to eleven P M?
Yes, I would, and it'd be nice if, I'm not sure, Robert, what type of direction, but can we send out some kind of notice then that this ordinance is going to be in effect prior to let residents know ahead of time that this ordinance passed, and then that way they have enough time to be notified of the ordinance change or?
If passed, this ordinance would be effective immediately, is the way these ordinances are written and why you'd be considering it as an emergency ordinance. That means if you pass it before eleven o'clock tonight, it would be effective before eleven o'clock tonight. Now, there are enforcement issues with that. It is written to be effective immediately. But there would be a public engagement process if it were postponed or considered as a regular ordinance where you have two readings.
Yes, and I would like to keep my motion as stated, like I said, as fear for not only myself and my family, but my residents in my ward, so I would like to keep it, you know, within minimum and change the time to eleven o'clock. I'd be willing to do that as well.
Okay, so, uh, motion is now to approve the ordinance as drafted, which was eleven P M till five A M. Councilman Wadiola?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm with Councilman Madera. I I I think we have to really think about it, especially if it goes in effect tonight or tomorrow with enforcement. And also, I think we got some public engagement through social media. But I think we have to really do some public engagement for Monaco Park, for example. My aunt lives across from it. They don't have a big driveway. They park across the street sometimes when they have family functions. So is her car is going to be getting towed away every time, you know, all the cousins come over and someone like Craig was saying, needs to leave their car in her driveway, so they don't get towed. Does she move hers across the street? So I I just think we need to get just kind of vent it out more. I think this is a good start. And I like the curfew from eleven to five, but the parking situation, what about the homeowners on the other side? Or behind, I think we have to, there's two churches, for example, Mar- Monaco Park. Are they going to begin parking problems now then because we took it away from the park? So I'd like to see see this continued, to really vent it out, see what staff, what the neighbors and the enforcement part, because we want to pass something that we are going to enforce, not just just have it in the books.
Councilmember there?
Yeah. Would it be possible to postpone this to the twenty first? I think, you know, right now, we're kind of having some knee jerk reactions, right? Because it was an emotional weekend and there was a lot that happened. But we talk about this all the time, about getting the community involved and having that process of community involvement. And I think this is one of those times when you definitely need the community involvement, because it's not just going to affect you know, the parks and the intended consequences, right, that we wanted to have, which is parks to clear out and no violence. And that, you know, these parks are used by everyone, especially right now, it's it's used by a lot of our residents. That's how they go out and try to socially distance while, you know, seeing people and trying to increase their their risk of exposure. So I I think it's important to to hear from the communities that this is going to affect. I I think, you know, like we mentioned, parking is just one aspect of it, and that's going to affect all the communities, you know, up north and River Run. Those parks don't even have parking lots, you know, people are parking right at the parks. Even in Reunion, I'm sure people park at the South Lawn Park. And so you're going to have, if we're enforcing this equally across the city, you're going to have hundreds of cars being towed, just just for the parking part of it. Now we're talking about, you know, setting the the curfew and, you know, how is that going to be enforced? Is it going to be a hard enforcement? Are we going to give the chief and the police officers discretion to, you know, be able to clear people out or, you know, have them risk getting tickets? So I I think, you know, rather than have this go into effect tonight, let's sit on it, reread the ordinance, so we know what's actually in it. I mean, we literally received it during the middle of the meeting. And, you know, ask these questions of staff, think about the cause and effects that are going to go into place. And then, you know, we can still pass it in a reasonable time. You know, I I think whether we pass it in a few weeks from now or today, ultimately, the the impact's going to be the same. So, you know, I I would ask the motion maker to postpone to the the twenty first.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Madera and Councilman Gariel. But, you know, I have to disagree and I would like to vote and have it on record, because when when bullets are flying and it's less than ten blocks from my house or eight blocks, even less probably, I I would like to vote if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. But to me, this is a serious concern. I've reached out to several of my residents and constituents. I've lived in this area my entire life. I've never experienced any issues like this. So I would like to leave it, you know, like it is as stated. I do not want to postpone it. If it doesn't pass, some it doesn't pass. But I, you know, when you hear gunshot gunshots going, like I said, they do not have a name. I live in this area. I've lived in this same house my entire life and never experienced anything like this. And if it doesn't pass tonight, then it doesn't pass and it is on record. Thank you.
Councilwoman Smith?
Do city parks already have a curfew currently?
Yes, they do.
So I agree with Councilman Wadiel and Councilman Madera. Something needs to be done, but I don't think right now is the time. There's a lot of things that could the parking is a big issue. It's already a big issue up north and just, I think that would just cause more problems. Would it be possible to maybe enact this, but only keep it on a temporary basis so we can figure out what the problems are? And then reevaluate in like three months? Would that be a possibility?
Any ordinance that council enacts can be repealed at any moment. It could be temporary. There are issues of signage where staff would have to, I believe, go out and create new signs in various parks and identify that. The effective date of this could also be changed to be so many days out. But yes, there is a, there is a curfew, ten o'clock to five o'clock, weekdays, Sunday through Thursday. And Fridays and Saturdays, it's eleven to five. There is already towing authority for, but it is not as explicit if cars are abandoned in in parks as well. Just want people to be aware of that.
So I guess what would be the difference between what we have right now and what this new ordinance is doing?
The ordinance would provide a standardized curfew, essentially extending the curfew by an hour on weekdays from ten o'clock to eleven o'clock. And making the immediate towing very explicit for, and or I'm sorry, establishing a direct parking prohibition in ordinances that could possibly be done administratively, but it's not entirely clear whether that has been done or could be done. And then making that towing authority very explicit there and but it does also create a specific prohibition on parking adjacent to parks, which is which is new as well. As far as enforcement assistance, I would believe the chief may be best able to speak to as as to how this would assist in enforcement and whether he believed it would be immediately necessary or something that could be evaluated further.
Thank you, Robert. What I would tell you is, quite frankly, our park season is going to be over here relatively soon. We won't, we don't have that many more warm days ahead of us, and so I I absolutely agree. If council wishes to have a better, more thoughtful discussion about the impact, absolutely. As I envision this ordinance currently, right now, our ability to make five hundred people leave the park is difficult. No one wants to lose their vehicle, and I don't want to be in the towing car business either. No one wants to lose their vehicle, and I don't want to be in the towing car business either. But I do want to have the ability to go, the park is closed. If you're not here, we're going to start with that really nice vehicle. And we're going to tow it. And what I envision is at that point, once we write the first ticket, most people will start to leave. I, I believe me, I don't want to be in the towing business anymore than you want me in the towing business, but uh, you know, as Councilmember Guardiola uh mentioned, if you park on that side of the street, there is the distinct possibility you could receive a ticket and or have your vehicle towed.
Okay, so one thing to consider, would it be possible later to talk about doing permits to park on the streets adjacent to the park? Or put that in the ordinance hour or maybe later? Like apply for a permit to, like if you live across the street and you have a big family gathering and you need to park there for your company, would it be possible to apply for permits for that?
Uh, I think the discussion of yes is the short answer. The longer answer is parking permits is a solution for a potential solution for many of the city's parking concerns right now, but it is something that requires infrastructure and staffing to uh put it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Wadiola.
Okay, thank you. So I guess, um, you know, seeing that, we're gonna, if we approve this, we're gonna allow people to gather during the week till eleven, so we're extending it an hour where things could happen. Um, and keeping the weekend the same, which to me doesn't really make sense, um, what we're trying to do. Um, and if we pass it tonight, we didn't give no um, no awareness to any of those folks that live there. I think if we could amend it and say this doesn't go into effect until a week from today, where we could ask staff to go out and knock on those doors and let them know that we just passed an emergency ordinance, that you can't leave your car there um to give them some awareness and some heads up, because I just think, I mean, this is necessary, don't get me wrong, and I, I don't think we should change the weekday. Um, because a lot of folks that are doing what they're doing, it's not like they gotta work at five in the morning sometimes, right? They're, they're, um, maybe I'm wrong, but they'll do it on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or start, especially on a Thursday, start their weekend early. But now they could stay up till eleven instead of the ten. Um, so again, I just think I totally agree with you, Councilwoman Ellen Thomas. I have lived here my whole life. Um, I've seen bullets fly, friends die down the street from Monaco. Um, it is a huge concern. Um, and I think we have to do something about it. I just think going into it right now without giving neighbors notices and um, we're just kind of rushing it where we could really make a plan or extend it, saying it goes in effect of next Monday or next Tuesday and get staff, if they have the time and make the time, I guess, to go out there. Um, and not just to Monaco Park, because there's a park, there's tons of parks and people use that parking uh for, or the parking for parks for parking for their home sometimes. I know like Oscar was saying, River Run, we have some up, up here. So I just think we need to give people some time to know that, hey, we're passing this, it goes in effect X amount this day, um, just other than tonight, and it goes effect tonight. So.
Councilman Madera.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think uh kind of al- already uh said this, but uh, I, I'd like to move to postpone it to the twenty first if we could.
I don't believe that that is a motion that we can entertain at this time, since we already have a motion on the table to pass some, the ordinance. But I do appreciate your uh, your effort. Um, Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Mayor, I, I I do believe that, that if there's a motion pending, a motion to continue, the current motion could do that as well, could move a main motion to another time, to identify it to another time, um as subsidiary, like a motion to amend.
Okay, I said corrected, so. Um, have a motion to postpone it. I have some hands up that are just people wanting to chat about everything, so please use your physical hand if you wish to second Councilman Madera's motion. Uh, Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Um, yes, I would be willing to, like I said, amend my motion to notify the residents within two weeks. But um, I would like to keep it as stated, but give them two weeks notice from tonight to notify them of this ordinance.
Uh, Mr. Shealy, if you want to step in and help, we had a motion and then we had a second motion and now we have an amendment, so please give some direction on how to proceed.
I think uh, if there's a second to the Mr. Madera's subsidiary motion would be the current item.
Is there a second to Mr. Madera's motion? Uh, Mayor Protem, your hand disappears because of your virtual background, but I presume you wish to speak.
Yeah, I would second uh Councilman Madera's. I, I really want to get more information, because it's I, I understand where Councilman Ellen Thomas is coming from, but we have parks all over the entire city and we can't just carve out one park. This affects so many people and um, so I really would rather wait until we have further direction from staff. So I'm seconding Councilman Madera's motion.
Alright, so have a motion and a second to postpone this to September twenty first. Is there any discussion on that? Councilwoman Smith.
The way that I understand this motion or this ordinance is we want PD to have a reason or something to fall back on, it's to get these people out of the thing, to get them out of the parks, I'm sorry. So I think if we have this mo- this ordinance in place right now and then ask for the chief to talk to his patrolman, like let's give the residents a grace period so that they can figure out what's going on. That way, um, PD still has somebody to fall back, or something to fall back on, saying that these big groups of people, they need to leave, but still give grace for the parking issues, if that's an option.
Mr. Shealy, do you want to chime in on that?
Sure, I think um mandating a grace period would have the same effect of implementing it on a particular night and making it effective. If, if this is not continued this evening, um, the ordinance could be amended to make it effective in two weeks as well, which would have the same opportunity, but if, if an ordinance, if the law is on the books, it's enforceable. Um, and we wouldn't want to pass a law that we're saying we're not going to enforce.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Noble.
How many votes are required to pass an emergency ordinance?
Seven votes.
Councilman Hurst.
Yeah, so I, I completely support the intent of this, of this um legislation. I just, I still think there's some stuff we need to hear from the community on. And I, you know, I hear Councilwoman Ellen Thomas saying she's willing to allow for two weeks notification. I actually think we can do that sooner by voting on this for the twenty first and enforcing it from that point forward. So it could actually go into effect earlier if we just hold off and vote on the twenty first while still getting feedback from both staff and our community. And for all the reasons that have been stated, you know, there, there are some things that I would like clarification on, um, and then that clarification's going to need follow up. Um, really, you know, we talked about the parks and then there's something about uh the golf course, you know, having a liquor license at the golf course and not allowing cars to park there overnight. You know, we just can't depend on everybody being responsible. Um, and there's just certain things that I'd like us to work through and understand and get feedback on. Um, and in no way is that saying that I don't uh fully support the intent of this. Because I, I do understand, you know, I, I grew up in a, an area that, that experienced this growing up as well, and it's, it's terrifying. Um, so I wanna, I wanna put it into it. I wanna find the best way to do that, but I also don't want to make legislation that we're then gonna have to go make several changes to as we start to learn some of the side effects to the um to that legislation. I think one of those were, were alluded to um by Councilwoman Smith, you know, there may be solutions that we can kind of test the waters with their community with. I don't want to charge people to park uh across the street from their house. But if we can find a way to systematically and very, you know, affordably have some residential permits that allow you to have, you know, vehicles in that neighborhood. That's been done all over the country and, and lots of metro, metro areas. Um, so I think we'd have some opportunities there, but is there a palette for that? You know, are people uh really serious about that being in the oper- uh a, a solution to this issue uh in accordance with this uh legislation that we're all discussing now? And so you know, in the next, was it twelve days, I, I would like to get some feedback from um our community and have, and let them have the ability to speak in public comment uh before we vote on this, because I think we can learn from our community some of the challenges that we're trying to overcome, not and not necessarily uh the problems we're trying to solve. I think we all discussed those in great detail tonight. But some of the side effects or, you know, potential hardships that this creates and how we can kind of uh work on solutions to go along with this legislation that we are predicting we'll need to have uh once this passes.
Thank you. Um, you know, I've heard a lot of comments. I've heard comments like, uh, let's staff look at it and come back to us with what it needs to say and everything and um, you know, I, this was not an ordinance that council brought forth and said, we wanted this to be passed. This was an ordinance that staff came to us with and said, we need a tool in order to help us make your community safer. And we would like for you to pass this ordinance so that we can do that. Give us a tool in our toolbox to help get the cars out of the parking lots and the, and the parks and everything. Give us a tool in order to make sure that we have a new way to make our community safer and make your parks safer. And we're arguing back and forth over whether we want to do it now or we want to do it two weeks from now. Um, so I don't support the idea of um postponing this. I also support the idea of passing the ordinance on an emergency basis. We can come back in two weeks if we need to and we can make amendments to it. But what do we say to the residents this weekend, whenever another flash mob gathers in another park and they can't take their kids over there to play and they can't use the playground equipment, they can't, you know, enjoy the things that we're trying to provide for the community because we weren't um strong enough to take action this evening. So I do not support the uh continuance of it. I also support passing it on an emergency basis. And if we need to look at how we address the parking issue around parks and everything, then let's look at doing that. But as far as giving the police department the tool that they have asked for to help our community be safer, especially in the parks, I'm all for doing that, because it was their request to do so. Uh, Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
If that was a mistake, I meant to lower my hand, but I'd like to keep my motion as stated.
Um, we are on Councilman Madera's motion right now, which is to continue to the twenty first. Uh, seeing no other requests for discussion, we will vote on that motion. Um, Mr. Gibson, please do a roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
No.
Councilmember Noble.
No.
Councilmember Wadiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
No.
Councilmember, our Mayor Protem Frank.
Uh, yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
No.
I have one, two, three, four As and one, two, three, four Nays, so uh, motion fails.
Okay, the motion to continue to the twenty first fails. Now we are back to the motion to pass the emergency ordinance. Um, is there any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, we'll take a roll call vote. This will require votes to pass.
Councilmember Madera.
Mr. Gibson, in order to approve this on first reading, we'll need to host it to some extent, so I'm prepared to share my screen. One of the reasons we don't do too many emergency ordinances, I think. This is uh going to be ordinance twenty-two ninety-three, an ordinance amending the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to amend the park property curfew and to provide for parking restrictions and enforcement in and around city parks and declaring an emergency. It states, now therefore beat ordained by the City Council, the City of Commerce City as follows. Section one, the City Council finds and determines that this ordinance is declared to be an emergency ordinance and is in active pursuit of section five point four of the Charter. Passage of this ordinance and its passages, an emergency ordinance is immediately necessary for the preservation of the public health, safety and welfare. Section two, section seven dash one thousand three and seven dash one thousand four, the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code are hereby amended to set forth in exhibit A. Section three, excepted specifically modified here in the provisions of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code, remain unchanged and in full force and effect. Section four, this ordinance takes effect immediately on passage. I will then skip to exhibit A to simply note the changes in section seven, one thousand three, changes the title to add parking on or adjacent to parks. Subsection A updates uh a previously outdated reference to the subsection where authorization uh is given elsewhere in the code for operating motorized vehicles in the park. It adds a subsection D here. I'll try and zoom in on, I cannot zoom in on. Um, except for the vehicles of government employees engaged in official business or when specifically authorized by the city, it is unlawful to park any motorized vehicle or trailer, whether attended or unattended. One, what when the owner or operator is not using the park property, two, on park property between eleven P M and five A M, or three, were posted on the portion of any public street abutting the park, any park property between eleven P M and five A M. Any vehicle in violation of this subsection shall be deemed abandoned, subject to immediate towing, impoundment or relocation. The violation is uh deemed a civil infraction. Uh, subsection E one is author, is amended to authorize the city manager to close or restrict access to specific areas of park property for operating motorized vehicles as needed. Um, section seven dash one thousand four, subsection B is amended to state except for government employees engaged in official business, deleting a reference to subsection C below and adding, or when specifically authorized by the city, it is unlawful for any person to be present within any park property, including any streets. Um, parking areas or roadways located therein between the hours of eleven P M and five A M. Uh, that is where the ordinance deletes the reference to um weekday versus weekend curfews. And that is the end of the changes. Thank you.
Thank you. And are we now able to do a roll call vote?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson.
Councilmember Madera.
No.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wadiola.
No.
Councilmember Hurst.
No.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Frank.
No.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Uh, motion fails for the emergency ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Uh, is there any other business related to public safety that any council members wish to discuss? Councilman Madera.
Uh, yes, I would like to uh put this motion on the twenty first agenda. Or this, or not, I'm sorry.
Okay, it can go on the twenty first agenda. Thank you. Any other uh items? Okay, well, thank you again, everybody, for your time this evening. I do believe that it was helpful. I hope that the residents were able to get some answers to questions they have. And uh, I know that I got some answers to some questions that I have and uh, I think that then we can all um breathe a little safer or a little easier, knowing that um we do have a police force that is out there with the explicit intent of making our community safer and doing so in the right way. So thank you, everybody, for your time again, and have a good evening. We'll see you next week on Monday for a study session. And uh, that is all. We are adjourned.